If everyone would take their seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Good evening. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, March 26, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone here in our city council chambers, as well as our listening audience at WCBU. Welcome also to our audience watching via cable, channel 22.
Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young. Councilmember Grayb. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Regenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We are at proclamations.
We have four proclamations today, and I've asked councilmembers to assist with these proclamations. The first one celebrates National Community Development Week, and we have representing Community Development Director Joe Doolin, and I also see back there in the corner Grants Manager Catherine Murphy. Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant with the acronym CDBG program has operated since 1974 to provide local governments with the resources to develop viable urban communities by providing decent, affordable housing, creating suitable living environments, and expanding economic opportunities principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas this year commemorates the 15th anniversary of the CDBG program, and whereas the City of Peoria has effectively administered and customized its CDBG program to implement various programs and projects in the areas of affordable housing, public service, public facilities, parks, and sidewalks to improve the conditions in our city. And whereas Congress and the nation acknowledge the critical value of the Community Development Block Grant program and the significant projects and assistance opportunities that rely on these funds for support. Now, therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim April 1st through April 5th as Community Development Week in Peoria, Illinois dated this 26th day of March 2024 AD.
Thank you. Director Doolin?
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So this week, this year is the 50th anniversary of Community Development Week. The week is specifically designed to really highlight and show appreciation for the community development block grant funds the City of Peoria gets. The City of Peoria has worked really hard over the years to spend that money to really go as far as we can. Often when we're adopting our budget, we don't have the flexible money that we often have, you know, it goes to police, fire, roads, and things like that. This is the money that is specifically designed to go out into the community to improve the lives of our residents. So this is the money we use for roofs as part of our roofing program, our emergency repair programs in the winter when someone's furnace breaks. This is the money we use this year for our nonprofit capital program where projects like Carver Center, Friendship House, Minority Business Development Center got funding for upgrades to their projects as well. In addition, we use this money for our code enforcement inspectors to have more inspectors than we traditionally would if we didn't have these funds. So we thank our federal legislators for ensuring that this money is in the budget every year. Often, when different budgets get appropriated, sometimes you're a little, hold your breath a little bit to make sure that these programs are fully funded, because these are direct federal funds that we can get out to the residents through roofs, utility assistance programs like that. Finally, with all these programs, the last four years at the City of Peoria, the additional funds we have, I just want to thank our grant staff and the entire community development staff. They do a fantastic job administering these funds. Peoria, the City of Peoria recently, along with Peoria Housing Authority, was awarded a Choice Neighborhoods grant, and representatives from HUD were down in Peoria. And the representatives from HUD at the regional level often tell me and have told the mayor that our staff does a fantastic job. We're the model community that they often refer to of not finding findings, spending the money wisely. And so I just really want to appreciate and recognize the staff that works on these on a daily basis. So, thank you.
Thank you to you and your team. Wonderful job. Our next proclamation recognizes National Fair Housing Month, and we have Debbie LaRue with the Fair Housing Commission. Ms. LaRue, thank you for being here. Councilmember Vespa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the month of April has been designated as National Fair Housing Month by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and whereas the passage of the Fair Housing Act, the landmark civil rights law signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson on April 11, 1968, made discrimination in housing transactions unlawful. And whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, familial status, national origin, military discharge status, physical or mental disability, and source of income in all aspects of real estate transactions, including leasing, home sales, and mortgage lending. And whereas, ending housing discrimination and expanding equal access to housing promotes equity and fairness while contributing towards the economic stability and community health of Peoria, Illinois. And whereas our entire community benefits from diversity and integration and acts of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunities are unacceptable to a common sense of decency and fairness. Now, therefore, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, and on behalf of the Peoria City Council, does hereby proclaim the month of April as National Fair Housing Month in Peoria, Illinois dated this 26th day of March 2024 AD.
Ms. LaRue?
Thank you. Members of the City Council, Mayor Ali, city staff, on behalf of the Housing Commission, we thank you for the acknowledgement of Fair Housing Month, recognized across the country this April. I would also like to take a moment to thank the Commission's staff liaison, Nicole Morrow, for her leadership, her work ethic and dedication in inspire and motivate the commissioners in our work. Fair Housing Month commemorates the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, a federal law that forbade discrimination in the housing market on the basis of race, color, national origin, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability, and familial status. While the Act rendered discrimination unlawful, such discrimination is often difficult or resource-intensive to prove. And Peoria, like the rest of the nation, remains largely segregated, and many Peorians lack access to safe and affordable housing options. The Housing Commission was tasked by City Council to develop an affordable housing plan and to provide recommendations on current and future proposals that impact housing. Fair housing cannot exist separately from affordable housing choice. The Commission's mandate requires that we deliberately seek to counteract the effects of systemic housing discrimination, and we are eager to continue in this work. As a commission and as a community, we recognize that housing is essential for all individuals and families, and that housing needs exist along a continuum. Stable housing is a prerequisite for economic mobility, student achievement, job security, and health necessities, and it would be, it should be accessible to every individual that calls Peoria home. I'd like to leave you all with just a few facts about housing that I hope will provide a framework to help us think about housing needs in our community. The construction of 100 new affordable homes begets an average of $2.2 million increase in local tax revenue and 161 new jobs. Children in affordable housing perform better on cognitive development tests. Affordable housing is hero housing. Local heroes include teachers, police officers, nonprofit employees, service workers, hospital workers, and other first responders. Half of Peorian renters spend at least 30% of their income on rent, and another 25% spend more than half of their income on it. And finally, taxpayers spend an average of $36,000 a year on services for a person experiencing homelessness. By comparison, preventative measures such as supportive housing reduce this number by half. So, thank you for your time and thank you for this recognition.
Thank you for your leadership and service. Our next proclamation recognizes Multiple Sclerosis Awareness Week. We have Shanti Hunter. Councilmember, yes, Shanti. Councilmember Bernice Gordon Young.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the nerve, central nervous system, affecting nearly 1 million people in the United States alone. And whereas multiple sclerosis generally strikes people in the prime of life between ages 20 through 50, and the cause and course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown, and no cure exists. And whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is committed to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge and insight into the disease. And whereas together, we transform what it means to live with MS and provide global leadership to help achieve our vision of a world free of MS. And whereas, since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure. They have invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research. And whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fuel research on pathways to MS cures and invest in the MS research workforce at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the United States and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatment of MS. And whereas, the mission of the National Multiple Sclerosis Society is to cure MS while empowering people affected by MS to live their best lives in one that all Americans should support. And whereas the City of Peoria recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has shown toward creating a world free of MS. Now, therefore, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby proclaim March 10th through March 16th as MS Awareness Week in Peoria, Illinois dated this 26th day of March 2024 AD.
Ms. Hunter?
Good evening. Good evening, Council and Mayor Ali. Thank you for having us this evening. I just wanted to let you all know that this March is actually the month for MS Awareness Month, and I am an MS warrior.
All right.
Diagnosed now for four years. By MS being a disease in which it's like a snowflake disease, it affects everyone differently, it's very hard to find a cause and a cure for it. And by people of color being, having more aggressive disease progression and greater disability due to healthcare disparities and not being, their disabilities not being caught in enough time, it causes a lot of issues with them basically becoming disabled at a young age, quicker than anybody else, because their stuff is always getting caught later. So they end up being cognitive disabilities are worse, as well as their walking balance. There's a lot of issues that could be solved or issued, that could be caught at an earlier timeframe if we had the proper research and stuff done for people of color. So I am asking if you all can join us on April 21st for Walk MS Peoria, which would be here at the Riverfront Festival Park at 12 o'clock. And if you cannot join us, can you please go to walkms.org to volunteer or donate so we can try to find a cure and end MS? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. And our final proclamation recognizes Parkinson's Awareness Month. We have Roger Helene here representing, and we have Councilman Kelly presenting the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive disorder of the nervous system that affects movement for which there is currently no cure. And whereas 1 million people in the United States are currently living with Parkinson's disease, the American Parkinson Disease Association released a new study in 2023 that stated that there are approximately 90,000 new cases diagnosed each year, making Parkinson's disease the 14th leading cause of death in the U.S., according to the Centers for Disease Control. And whereas, every day, through research, patient and family services, and education, the American Parkinson's Disease Association provides the support, education, and research that help everyone impacted by Parkinson's disease to live life to the fullest. And whereas, increased efforts and awareness are desperately needed to help expedite the research efforts into better treatments, medications, and ultimately a cure, to help those impacted by Parkinson's disease live life until a cure is found. And whereas the world, the nation, and the state of Illinois observe Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in April 2024. And whereas, the state of Illinois recognizes the efforts of the Central Illinois Parkinson's Support Group to raise funds and promote awareness to fight Parkinson's disease, thereby improving the quality of life for those living with the disease. Now, therefore, I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize April 2024 as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Peoria, Illinois dated this 26th day of March 2024 AD.
Mr. Helene?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ali, Council, and city staff. Excuse me. I was just telling one of the guards on my way up. He was trying to tell me where to go. I said, no offense, unfortunately, this is about my 15th year here to get this. Every year, I hope it's my last year. We have made progress, say fairly, some good progress has been made in finding some biomarkers and maybe some medication that can even stop the disease. We'll find out down the road, as we all know, those things take time. But this is one of the first times I can stand in front of you and say we've actually had some progress made this year. Unfortunately, I have to stand in front of you and tell you that we have probably had our worst year in the Parkinson's community here in Peoria. We've lost at least five of our support group members this year. So, it doesn't get any better. I can't say much more, and what's written in that proclamation, I mean, it affects basically everybody from young to old. It's more prevalent in the old people. My wife is 18 years into it, and she's only 64 years old. So, do the math, you can see how young she was. I have a friend out in Virginia who was 18 when he was diagnosed with Parkinson's. So, once again, I just want to thank you for recognizing what the support group does, what the APDA does, and really what all the Parkinson's groups do. I would like to ask you, we do have a fundraiser at Panera's in Westlake. It's on April 11th, which happens to be World Parkinson's Day, and Dr. James Parkinson's birthday. Dr. James Parkinson's was the one that actually put the, he didn't put the name to it, he made the name Shaking Palsy at that time, but he's the one that actually diagnosed it by watching six people. So, I laid the flyers out here on the windowsill. It's four to eight at the Panera's in Westlake. My understanding is if you order online or through their app, they will accept the 25% anytime during the day. So, if you want to do it for lunch, just make sure you use the app or an online order. And there's a code in there, Fund For You, that goes in where they ask you to put like a promo code or something. Once again, thank you. I look forward to seeing you next year. Not really.
Thank you for your advocacy, Mr. Helene. Before we go into the rest of the content for our agenda, I'd like to make a special tribute to a special shiro within our community. Ms. Alexandria Lynn Scott Pearson passed away on Sunday, March 17 in Peoria. Ms. Pearson was a longtime public servant, a public leader, and a friend of the city and the county of Peoria. Lynn was passionate to fight for all people and started at a young age, joining in with the NAACP in their efforts to change hiring practices at Sears and Roebuck and Silco in Peoria. She was elected to the Peoria County Board in 1984 and served faithfully for 32 years, retiring in 2016. Lynn continued breaking racial barriers by becoming the first African-American to be appointed chairperson of the Peoria County Board, serving in that position from 1998 to 2000. She also served as vice chair from 1992 to 1994 and 1996 to 1998. Lynn's commitment to public service goes beyond her service as a county board member. She started on the Peoria Police and Fire Commission as a member on June 28, 2005. She was chairperson on this commission from 2008 to 2022. She was vice chair until December 2023. Lynn played a very active role on the commission and was very much respected and appreciated. Her service on the police and fire commission will be greatly missed. Her focus also extended to many other community and national works. A true trailblazer, we salute the many contributions of Ms. Lynn Scott Pearson, and we thank her family for sharing her with us. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board meeting held March 12, 2024, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 24-075 is a communication from the City Manager and the Interim Director of Human Resources to approve a contract with Resource Management Associates in an amount not to exceed $45,200 for the administration of the Fire Captain Promotional Examination. 24-076 is a communication with request to approve an agreement between the City of Peoria and all employee bargaining units to extend the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee for two years effective January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025. 24-077 is a communication with request to approve a resolution regarding the approval of closed session minutes. 24-069 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance providing for the termination of the North Side Tax Increment Financing District. 24-070 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance providing for the termination of the Central Business District Downtown Tax Increment Financing District. 24-071 is a communication with request to adopt an ordinance providing for the termination of the Midtown Plaza Tax Increment Financing District. And 24-78 is a communication with request to approve the side application for a Class B1 restaurant 25% food liquor license with a subclass 1A 2 AM closing hours with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol for Matilda's Cocktail Lounge LLC doing business as Matilda's at 100 State Street, Suite 1A, with recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Can I get a motion to approve moved by Councilmember Allen, excuse me, Euler, seconded by Councilmember Allen? Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are on to regular business. 24-79 is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request to approve a sole-source contract with Dr. E. Anthony White for research partner services under the 2020 Bureau of Justice Assistance Strategies and Policing Innovation Grant through September 30, 2024, in an amount not to exceed $83,950. And this item requires 2/3 vote of the council members voting, and for tonight, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to the police chief, and I think he has with him Jacob Moushawn, our crime analyst, to talk about this item.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm gonna really just pass this off to Moushawn. He's been working hand in hand with Dr. White several years before I've even been here. So he's more versed in this, but Moushawn?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name's Jacob Moushawn, crime analyst for the Peoria Police Department. We first began this grant or the application for the grant in about 2019. When we were looking at the grant, we had several issues that we were trying to address. One of those was trying to get an increase in some of the technology we had. When we looked at this grant, we determined that what we're trying to do is decrease some of the habitual offenders that we have committing the high crime. By doing that, we, through our study, we determined that if we could decrease our habitual offenders by 3%, we could roughly decrease crime by an average of 15%. Looking at just the top the top 3% of those habitual offenders. We were awarded the grant, and we originally applied for the grant for $250,000. Our proposal was so well received that we received half a million dollars, or just a little bit over that. One of those stipulations with getting that half a million dollars was that we were going to need a research partner. To be fair, my first pushback was I didn't think we needed one. And they said, no, you do need one. And so we said, okay, you're our boss, and we want this money and this grant, so we're going to do what you told us to do. What I found out was that I didn't know a lot of what I didn't know, and that came from Dr. White and his research experience and his research team. This grant was awarded us right in the middle of COVID, and as such, it was rewarded to us late. We had delays, and we faced a lot of hurdles. One of the programs we were going to go with tripled their price, and so we had to find other programs to go with and other means to go about to update some of the equipment and technologies, including computers, cameras, and servers, in order to kind of help facilitate communication throughout the entire department and all the different units. Dr. White was the person that helped us overcome these hurdles and was able to help us keep this grant moving and keep the study going. He has submitted his abstract for the final project, which our final project report is due in June. He has submitted our abstract, and by that abstract alone, our, the CNA who oversees this grant, has really, the abstract was so well received that myself and Dr. White was requested to come out to the conference in November to present our project, the hurdles, the outcomes, and everything about it. And then our paper will be used to also help further on other agencies across the nation build their studies and their programs and continue through this grant process. So from where I stand, Dr. White is an essential, not just essential, but a mandatory member of our team.
That's great. Questions for Mr. Moushawn or the Chief? Moushawn, I'm sorry, Moushawn. Councilmember Gordon Young?
I don't have a question, I have a comment. It's not very often that you apply for a $250,000 grant, and they double it. And so that just speaks to the work that you all do and what you put into this. But then I just want to commend you, you know, for this effort. And with that being said, if there are no other comments, I'd like to move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Any other comments or questions? I certainly know of the reputation of Dr. White, and he's been working with the Peoria Police Department for a very long time and very respected. So I'm glad that you called him a member of your team. That's fantastic. Thank you both. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-080 is a communication from the City Manager, Director of Public Works, and Finance Director Comptroller with request to approve a resolution amending Resolution Number 18-073A, setting fees for the Peoria Combined and Sanitary Sewer District, increasing the city's sanitary sewer lateral fee from 1.3028 CCF to 1.3328 CCF, effective May 1 of 2024.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have our Finance Director, Kyle Craddy, who's here, and I'll let, turn the floor over to Finance Director Craddy to explain this one.
I'll run through it real quick. The ordinance in front of you is a 2.3% increase to the lateral sewer rate for the city-owned sewers. That equates to about a 52 cent increase per quarter, or around a $2 increase annually for the individual homeowner. And just as a reminder to Council, this increase is in line with the information that was provided to Council back in 2020 as we started down the course with our CSO requirements. And this 2.3% increase allows us to continue down that path through 2059, which is the term of that plan to make sure we're meeting our obligations under the CSO. And with that, I have any, I'm here to answer any questions if Council has them.
Seeing no questions, can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Reganbach, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Any other questions? Please cast your ballots. Thank you, Director Craddy. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-81 is a communication from the City Manager and Chief of Police with a request for the following. A, accept the fiscal year 2024 National Integrated Ballistic Information Network Grant from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board in the amount of $675,000. And B, adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria 2024-2025 biennial budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of grant funding from the Illinois Law Enforcement Training and Standards Board in the amount of $675,000. And Item B requires a 2/3 vote of the council members voting, and for tonight, no less than six votes.
Mr. Manager, more other people's money.
Yes, this is, again, good news. I'll turn it over to the Chief to walk through this one as well.
Good evening. This will be the first time I wear glasses up here, so I'm showing my age a little bit. So yes, more money. We initially put in for $700,000. We went, they only gave us 675. Miss Councilwoman Gordon Young, but we're doing all right. But this grant was awarded to us to satisfy initial capital expenditures or other costs associated with expanding our NIBIN system. So that's the National Integrated Ballistics Information Network. What that means, in just plain language, is in Peoria, we have our NIBIN system. Nobody around us, these surrounding neighborhoods, departments don't have it. We work directly with ATF with our NIBIN system. We're able to expand it. We don't have a range currently. We use a range that does not belong to us. It's an outdoor range. This money will be allowed to build part of a training center or an indoor range, et cetera, for us to conduct training and NIBIN, and to be able to expand our NIBIN system and allow access to other agencies to be able to come in, test their firearms for NIBIN cases, and be able to push those off to the ATF and get the results back. So it's an expansion of our NIBIN capabilities. And Jenny did a lot of work to get this done. I think we did this July of last year, I believe it was. It was opened and closed, and we just found out that we were awarded that.
Okay, questions? Get a motion? Moved by Councilmembers Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk? Oh, wait a minute, that's Item A. Item A. Councilmember Kelly?
Move to approve.
Item B.
Move to approve Item B.
Okay, thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any comments, questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-82 is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with request to receive and file the month ended January 31, 2024, an audited financial report.
Director Craddy?
The report in front of you tonight is the first report for 2024. I kind of took the opportunity, as we went into the first report of the year, to take a look and say, how could we provide a better report to Council and the public in terms of our financial position? So the report in front of you tonight, while it might look similar to how it traditionally has been, we have changed to looking at our performance compared to our average last five years of our receipts and our expenditures. So what we're trying to do here is say, are we ahead or behind the usual trend? Because I have stood up here for about the last year and consistently would tell Council, we have three years receipts, three months of receipts coming in, we have three months of receipts coming in, and we're going to meet those numbers. So the intent of the change in the report is to better give you an indication of if we're really on track with the historical trend. So my staff did a lot of work actually putting all of the budgets into a monthly basis to be able to do the reporting this way, so I want to make sure. I thank them for their work on getting that piece done. It also now includes a color-coded arrow system on it to give Council, as well as the public, an idea if we're on track, kind of ahead of pace or behind. Just for context, those arrows, if that's plus 10% ahead, it's going to be a green arrow up. If it's 0 to 10%, it's going to be that middle arrow, or yellow arrow, just saying we need to watch it. And if it's below trend, it's red to say we need to kind of watch it and be mindful of it. So I just wanted to kind of point that out because it is a change in how we're presenting the report. But holistically speaking, we are about 30% above year-to-date last year. We are, on our revenue side, we are up, we are down about 10% on expenses. So we're trending in the right direction. January is always a hard report to really get a strong picture of where we're going, but we are ahead of budget pace as well as where we were last year. So with that, I'll ask, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. I'm going to call on you, Councilmember Seer. You asked for this initially.
I think I'm going to give him a break tonight.
Any feedback, comment?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Want to make a motion?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Receiving file.
Receiving file, thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Any other questions or comments? I like the new format.
Thank you.
Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-083 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request to receive and file updates to the American Rescue Plan Act guidelines for the down payment assistance in housing rehabilitation programs.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to our Community Development Director, who wants to talk through how we're going to be running the grant programs this year.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Council. So previously, back in 2022, as part of the American Rescue Plan funds, the Council decided to implement two specific programs for neighborhoods, Down Payment Assistance Program and Housing Rehab Program. We've been implementing those throughout the last two years. And then this year, we, with the program timeline running down, we want to make sure that we can use that money as best as possible to attract owner-occupied properties to our neighborhood. So we had a meeting with the area, Peoria Area Association Realtors, to kind of brainstorm different ideas of how to improve the Down Payment Assistance Program. One of the things that they've seen is with the interest rates higher than they've been in the past and housing inventory low, it's a really hard market for a lot of people to get in. So investors who are bringing cash to the table can make a little more attractive offers than what people can afford, and we're seeing more investor-owned properties in the community. While, you know, there's an air, in neighborhoods, we want to make sure there is quality rental property, but in neighborhoods, owner-occupied properties are very important for the stability of the neighborhoods in the long term. So one of the things we wanted to change the program requirements is to add some additional incentive for someone purchasing a home. If it's going to be an owner-occupied property, it's in the qualified census tract, and you're buying it from a property that was previously non-owner-occupied or investor-owned, you can be eligible for $10,000 down payment assistance as opposed to the previous $5,000. So we're hoping this maybe encourages some landlords to have good tenants to sell the property to them. Maybe it encourages those who are selling them and they're a landlord to open the pool a little more to owner-occupied people who want to purchase the property. So we're just changing that guideline to try to get the money out the door and increase homeownership in our community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to approve this, but I'd like to make comment after there's a second.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. And, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Director Doolin, I would just like to compliment you. This is very creative use of ARPA money. It should make it easier in some of our more difficult neighborhoods to improve homeownership. You know, as I say, I believe this is a creative solution. I know we're running out of time, but nevertheless, I think this is great, and I applaud your effort. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On that same track, Director Doolin and staff, I just want to say, this is, this is great. Oftentimes, government sets up a program and leaves it in place forever. Looking at the economic realities that we have, this just shows a little bit of that out-of-the-box thinking that we all like to strive for. So not to say everything Councilman Kelly just said, but great job, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. You're welcome. So we already have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Director Doolin. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. 24-51 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny a request to approve the Caligar subdivision with waivers for the properties located at 9310 North Fry Road in Peoria, Illinois. And we are in receipt from the petitioner, withdraw, he would like to withdraw his request, and because of that, no council action is required tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And if there are no questions, then we'll go on to, we would be at new business.
Okay, thank you. Is there any new business? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two items. First off, I would like to, and I have to do this in absence of Councilmember Jackson, but I would like to shout out District 1's own Christ Lutheran, whose boys and girls basketball teams won not only their respective state tournaments, but they won the national tournaments for the Lutheran League that they participate in. So winning is the mantra of the 309 right now, so shout out to the Christ Lutheran. Comments there? Specific shout out to Coach Paris Gully, who I went to middle school with, who was the coach of the girls' team, and his daughter is an up-and-coming basketball player too, so very excited for them. And then the last thing I would like to say is just a thank you to Public Works, specifically Shawn Johnson. Several months ago, me and Shawn connected with a neighbor in my district who had some concerns about lighting. And Shawn reached out to Ameren and was able, they did an assessment and realized that they needed some adequate, more lighting in this area. And Ameren recently installed a light post in this neighborhood, and it's made a huge difference for the street, to the point there was a car that was doing some unusual behavior several times of the week that would come around between 1 a.m. and 5 a.m. Since this light has been installed, that car no longer comes on the street. So it's just an example of what happens, and I know this Council has made investments with our American Rescue Plan funds to invest in external environmental aspects to address public safety. So again, thank you to Shawn and Public Works. Thank you to Ameren for installing this. And again, I just want to give that example of how we can address public safety using environmental concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Great example. Lights matter. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple questions, or maybe one question for our City Manager. We had conversation this afternoon, and I was really pleased with some of your comments about the TIF programs. And I'd like to, since I've been here the last seven years, I believe we always do a terrible job promoting the city of Peoria. But can you talk to us a little bit? I didn't want to take it out during the consent agenda. Talk to us about the three TIF program that were terminated and how successful they were so that we all know we had some problem in the past, but some of them worked really well. So maybe I just wanted to touch this on a bit in a positive manner. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. Yeah, the three TIFs were the Central Business District TIF, the North Side TIF, and then the Midtown Plaza TIF. All combined, they had a total starting assessed value of about $6 million. They ended with an assessed value of closer to $20 million, just over $20 million. So we've seen, in essence, a threefold increase in the amount of tax revenue that's going back to the other taxing bodies from those three TIFs. When we submitted our reports to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity, the state-level reporting on our TIF districts, one of the things that we talk about is the amount of private investment versus the amount of public investment inside each of the TIFs. And within those three TIFs that we closed out, we had nearly seven times more private investment than we did in public investment in those three TIFs. So it is, TIF is a valuable tool for the city. It is our one way that we can, one of the few ways that we can work towards providing incentives to developers as they look at putting qualified redevelopment investments back into our community, and that did that significantly. I think that we saw that the public investments were in the area of about $16 million, and we saw over $120 million of private investment. So really doing what it was intended to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Reganbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This will dovetail right into your question there, Councilman Seer, because I was just going to Seer, because I was just gonna mention that the East Village Grow-Sell TIF, which has a Citizens Advisory Commission, met this week, and we wanna make sure everybody knows that the housing rehab program is alive and active. So if you live in the East Village Grow-Sell TIF, you could qualify for a 50% matching grant for any exterior home improvements that you do on your property. I'm particularly proud of the council's commitment when we put this TIF together, because it also spurred some significant development and redevelopment in that area, but it also has helped to pay dividends to the homeowners and the residents in that area as well. And that's really gives, gives the folks in the neighborhoods some satisfaction, seeing that they could benefit from that as well. The committee has also talked about a garage demolition program, and this is something that staff's working on, so I don't wanna say too much at this time, but as part of our violence prevention funding going towards lighting and environmental issues, we would be contributing some money from the TIF increment, again, that would be used to demolish some of the garages that are so dilapidated. It doesn't take a very long drive through the alleys of some of these neighborhoods to see the need for that. So Director Doolin and his staff are putting together some parameters for what that's gonna look like, but I just wanna say that this EVGC TIF has benefited the city in many ways, and specifically benefited the homeowners in the East Plough as well, and we continue to do so. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Welcome. Fantastic. Any other new business?
We are at Citizens Opportunity to address the City Council.
Okay. I have three cards. The first is Jeff Leroy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilpeople. I'm coming to you tonight, 'cause it's kinda like, when you've got one bad house in the neighborhood, it runs everything else down. And this, we've got a house next door to where I live, and it started out with rubbish in the yard, and the city came out and cleaned his backyard twice, but then the inside of his house, all of a sudden, we start getting cockroaches in our house. And I talked to the neighbor across the street, and they did too. And the neighbor next door to them, and the one on the other side. And the city has graciously come out and sprayed the house next door. And, but he takes his time of trying to get back with the people at the city. He waits for them to do something for him. Well, as of the 12th of this month, I went outside and I was cleaning up around the side of the house. Now we got rats. And I had to get, I had to get the pest control people to set a rat box out next to the house. And it's gonna cost me more. It costs the neighbors more across the street, and he'd been getting all this for free next door. They even put a dumpster out for the guy, and he didn't take advantage of it. So I just wonder what the city, I mean, I talked to the city, I've talked to Joe, I've talked to Ashley, but he's got, he's got a cluster mess out in the front of his house. And the answer I got was, you could have a lawnmower sitting out or play toys for the kids, that's fine. But this guy's got a lawnmower deck, which he doesn't even have a mower that goes with it, sitting in his driveway. He's got two inoperable gas mowers out there. He also has one of those rotary pushboards, like was used years ago out in front. That's the only operating mower he's got. And I just wonder what it takes, and he's got the front picture window of his house is busted out. I just wonder what it takes for the city to actually come down on this guy and do something.
Continue to work with Director Doolin and his team.
Yeah. Anybody got any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm Candace Erby. I recently just moved back to Peoria about three months ago. I've been gone for 17 years. I graduated from Manuel High School in 2000, and I left and I went to the military. I only came back home for a short spit after I got out of the military, but one thing that I've noticed that has become like a big issue for me and people that I'm talking to, there is absolutely no food at the bottom of the hill. I mean, not one grocery store. When I graduated, I had three grocery stores to go to within the South End area. Now there's not absolutely one, and the closest grocery store is in Bartonville, which is outside of Peoria County. And that's ridiculous, and I was just wanting to know, like, is the city aware of this? Is anybody paying any attention? And what are we gonna do? There's so many people, like, they don't have transportation to get to Bartonville or out on Sterling, and then I hear even on the North End, they're closing down the Family Dollar, which that side of the city uses that as a grocery store, for instance. And I just really think that it's a huge, huge problem, and there, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be like this. And I just wanted to bring it, bring my concern to the city's attention.
Thank you, Ms. Erby.
You're welcome. Okay.
Hello, how's everybody doing today?
Good.
I'm here to talk about the violence over the weekend. I'm not here to point blame at the City Council. Peoria only has one City Council, and I think you guys are doing a fantastic job leading the city in a positive direction. I think you guys are doing a fantastic job leading the city in with a positive change as well. But with change, sometimes people are often forgotten.
And left behind.
I would also like to say violence is like poison that if not properly nurtured, will consume everyone around it. Mr. Allen, Mrs. Ali, you guys are both from Peoria. I believe you went to Manuel and Richwoods, if I'm not mistaken. I went to Central. I think the three of us can all relate to this. How many times have we heard sentences such as, "I need a gun for safety"? Sentences like those are the sprout of violence. Give me one second. Let me figure out my rest of my words here.
Take your time.
After having a talk with the police chief outside, it opened my eyes that the city is changing. You guys are moving the city in a positive direction, but the culture is not moving with you. I simply do not want you guys to forget the people and the culture that we have, and do not let the culture change on its own, because it will not move in the direction you want it to. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we're adjournment.
Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your service.